For those in council chambers who are now live on Facebook.
It always amazes me that as fast as my life's going by, those last two minutes before you start the meeting just seem like... If I could figure that out, I'd be a consultant. Lucky to see me on the screen, you know? They'll see him back there in the tech room. Okay, well, it looks like it's noon in Cheyenne, or high noon in Cheyenne, Wyoming, so we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the May 6, 2021, presentation of the Mayor's Office, Compliance Office, City Clerk, and City Treasurer Budgets. This meeting is open to the public. However, no public comment will be taken. So, it looks like we're going mayor first.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, or good morning, or whatever it is. Good afternoon. Feels like night.
We have done a lot of meetings in the last couple of months.
It does, it does seem like it. When you look at the mayor's budget, there really is not a lot of changes from the past. One big change that did happen was Brendan Ames, our Chief Economic Development Officer, left us to go work for Cynthia Lummis. And we took that position and transferred those dollars to the grant writer-manager position and transferred that position to the city treasurer's office. There's a little bit of a change in the chief of staff's position. The chief of staff was paid partially in compliance and partially in the mayor's office before. And with adding Andy Worcek to our office, he'll be a full-time chief of staff, and so there was a change there. And then the last thing you'll notice is the public defenders. Apparently, it's a conflict to have the public defenders working in the attorney's office or in the court. They're on the opposite side, and so it's, they moved those dollars to the mayor's office for us to handle. But short of that, there's no other changes. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Any questions from the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Labor.
Which page are you on?
Page 77 in our workbook, sir.
Yeah. Chairman Roybel.
Yes. Dr. Aldridge.
Dr. Aldridge, thank you. Through you to the mayor. I'm just curious, I wanted to make sure I understood, is the Director of Constituent Services Holly's position? I wasn't sure what that, who that was.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Yes, ma'am, that's Holly's position. That was the title that Mayor Orr gave her for that position. And I'll have to tell you, she really does that. It's amazing how many people call and how she's able to direct them to what they need as far as information goes. She does a great job.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the mayor's budget? Other questions? Well, hearing none, I guess we'll move next to the compliance.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the mayor and the rest of the staff for having us today. Not a lot of changes within Compliance Division this year. You'll be on page 83. As we talk about, again, the change, one of the significant ones was just separating the powers, if you will, between the chief of staff and the Compliance Department. That was a $54,000 change. We are also looking at some of the larger projects that are coming onboard within the community and forecasting for that coming forward. So we are asking for two new code compliance inspectors, as well as a plans reviewer, in order to meet those expectations and necessary opportunities for that development. And then there was also a thought process within that. We see an increase of our costs with the ICC code books. The 2021 code reviews are out. We'll be having those come onboard, providing a copy for all of our inspectors, as well as the city clerk and the city attorney. And then you also see an increase within dues and subscriptions, and that's because we added a speak reader program for the ADA compliance to our city website in order to meet that accommodation. And the other part of that is for the Warm Origami Tracking System, and that cost annually is about $3,600 with the cost increasing as we look at the record collection. Within the Compliance Department, we also added IT this year. So we now service human resources, risk management, ADA, IT, building, and the nuisance department. And that would be the significant changes within the 2022 budget.
Any questions from committee?
This is Dr. Aldridge.
Dr. Aldridge.
Through you to Mr. Fountain. I just, I have a couple of questions. The first one, I see a specialty pay of $600. Can you explain what specialty pay is?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Can, I don't know where that's at, $600 specific within this line.
It's on page 83, under, it's below longevity pay. It says specialty pay above life insurance.
Mr. Chairman. I don't know specifically what that is, but I can find out. But generally, what the specialty pay line item is, is for if somebody receives pay for having a certification, like the fire department has a lot of specialty pays. But I will find that out for you, Dr. Aldridge, and let you know.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had was, I see that we've budgeted $5,000 for junk vehicle towing fees. And I'm just curious as to if that's going to be sufficient. I mean, I know you guys have been really kept busy by my colleague, Councilman Johnson. And I know that, you know, we're limited by our impound lot currently, but I'm wondering if $5,000 is sufficient to address that concern or that issue.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Again, it was a forecasting number that we've kind of had in the past, and again, with the availability of the lot, unless we increase the lot size, I don't know that we'd be able to service more vehicles and getting them off of the street. Again, there's also another systematic process that where when you look at the vehicles on the right-of-way are handled by the police department. We only handle the ones that are in private property, like in their yards, if it's in the driveway with an expired registration, those type of things. If it's not operable on its own and it's in that private area, then we handle it. We do not do any of them that are in the right-of-way.
Oh, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Roybel, this is Councilman Cook.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fountain, I apologize. I do not have the luxury of having the workbook in front of me at my current location. But I do, I did have a question for you related to, I know, you know, in the last six months to a year, I guess, you and I have, you know, discussed, you know, the inspectors and the, you know, the building department and all that, and, you know, efficiency with that. And how do we, you know, how do we help you become more efficient and do those things that you need to do to meet the needs of the community? And again, stating that I do not have the workbook in front of me, and maybe you already went over this, or the information is in there. But part of what you and I have talked about is the need for, to update technology for the inspectors, whether that be able, whether that be tablets or whatever, those types of things, again, to just make them more efficient. But is there a budgetary ask for an upgrade in technology to help with the efficiencies of the building department?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Cook. We did not ask for that this year. What we were anticipating was an opportunity to, again, we've been tasked by the mayor's office to look at all of our citywide software programs, as well as what the inspectors are currently using. One of the primary issues that we currently have is not technically with the inspector side, but in the side of the application and the initial processing, and then getting them back out there. So what we are currently doing is looking at how we can expedite that process by getting the payment online process, communicating with Cares Act process, and that being paymentless back to the product itself, and for the user to have a more friendly experience and expedite that process. What we've also done with the Compliance Division, we were able to look at their, the phones that they had and get some technology put onto that. And then we've also moved them to two-in-ones as well. So we are meeting that challenge. But some of that done, was done, Councilman Cook, during the Cares Act process, and we were able to get that taken care of. So, again, we are currently working on that, but we've also met some of that challenge this last year with the opportunity through Cares.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Councilman Cook, any further questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Labor.
Well, I think this is a big step forward with a lot of good people. And I really think that we're going to see the coordination that we've been looking for, for a long, long time, in a better way. And so I think this is very worthwhile to have this sort of structure. I do have some questions. Because, of course, silo busting and cooperation is, I hope, a hallmark of the next few years, so that we're all working together. But that's always based on the budget and the financing and who gets what. But first of all, how are we going to coordinate with the police department about towing vehicles and developing a program that doesn't leave the people in the neighborhood, and who, of course, call us, to explain why the tow lot is full and we have so few spaces? And as a result, those vehicles sit there for months. And I think we really need to have some sort of policy analysis here, because it's not, really not adequate, I don't think, to say, "Well, we only handle the ones on private property, and they handle the ones on public property." Because they all need to be either licensed and operable or moved under our control, and then have the whole process of the abandoned vehicle title search, the acquisition of the title, the auction. And so, how do you conceive of us doing better in that regard, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Labor. That's an excellent question, and I think it's something we've been working on over the last few months and actually over the last few years. When you talk about the two separations and the silo busting, I think that comes from just an understanding in the communication as to where we want to go. One of the things we're currently looking at within our division, since we now have the opportunity, is to go back and review the city ordinances, as well as the city code, to see how we are working to take care of these situations that we have in the community, and how we can better network with one another. There has been conversations, not only with the mayor's office and the police department, but within our own internal operation. It's kind of an all-hands-in, all-hands-out operation when you speak to the fact that we have to be able to communicate with one another. So when we go out and we're working on something that's in the line of nuisance, if we see vehicles that are in the right-of-way that need to be taken care of, we report those back off to PD so they can get that taken care of and assist and follow back. If we receive a phone call, and we also try to route those calls over to them, but we'll also see if any of our folks are out there to make sure that's being taken care of. So it's the early stages, if you will, as we begin this process. And there's going to be some work, but I think we're going to have to make some changes to the city code in order to make that happen. And I also think that we have to work together, like you said, in busting those silos and understanding the need. The other part of that conversation with the lot itself is that the mayor had an excellent idea, and we'll begin to bridge that as we go forward with our partners at the county, but maybe looking at an expansion on that lot as we go forward as well, because we do have quite a few vehicles and quite a few nuisances that we have to take care of, and without the availability of a location to take them to, then we have a situation where we're not servicing the community to code.
Well, I'll look forward to communicating with you about that diligently, because there are a lot of problems that are even more difficult. And, but that problem is one that nags at people, and they really see us as not accomplishing a basic function. So I know you're working on it, and I look forward to hearing about it. I also am wondering if you can tell me where in this budget you're going to have a sufficient amount of money to deal with abandoned buildings and those serious, large, beyond nuisance. I see that now that you're going to have a better relationship with the building department, but those buildings are just tough. And I would reference your experience with 609 Pabriken. What do you foresee happening next there?
So if we want to use a specific residence as an example, I think at this point in time, nuisance and the building department have deemed that structure as a dangerous structure. Nuisance has abated the property and cleaned that up. But as we look forward, we're working with the legal department now in order to place our liens, if you will, or recollect the costs of cleaning up the residence and protecting the residence within the community. The building department's number-one obligation is to public safety, and so they've got that building and that structure secure. We check on that building and that structure continuously. And the hopes are that we'll be able to collect on that from the property owner and find a way to either, A, help them find a solution to get that property into the hands of somebody who may be able to develop it, or looking at the opportunity of helping them finding a way of disposing of that property so that somebody else can find that alternative for it. But that's just one way of looking at it. The biggest piece that we've always done here at the city is that nuisance actually cascades into a building department issue as the structure goes on in time. After you have the abatement process or you take care of that situation, the one thing you have to work on then is the collection side of it. And, you know, property rights in Wyoming are very open, and we have those folks that are not in compliance, and we have to understand they have property rights as well. But as we work on those property rights with those people, we also want to protect the other folks within the community so that we're not infringing upon their rights. And so legal is working with us to find that avenue, if you will, to not only collect on that, but also to take that one step further through that enforcement.
Well, I know that they are, and I know that that's the ultimate answer that won't be here for a while. But, so how much do you have in your budget for straight management of nuisances, as was the case there at 609, where, you have a figure with how much was expended by your department in cleaning it up?
Mr. Chairman, through you to, and I apologize last time, to Councilman Labor. I do not. I don't have that in front of me today, but I'd be happy to get that for you. I will tell you that what we currently have budgeted is $5,000, and the way we had to look at it was from an operational standpoint, not only for the city, but in terms of our budget. We absolutely could use more money and use more assistance. We have one nuisance officer to service the entire community. We have one budget, both in dangerous building and within the nuisance department, for $5,000 to take care of abatements. And we already know that we have more, more issues than we have dollars. And so we looked at the budget, and we said we will do the very best that we can with what we have. But we absolutely would love more opportunity and more revenue to take care of that, but we don't have anything other than that at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering how we're going to view the continuation of our program begun under the previous administration called Fight the Blight, which I know Mr. Eric here has a lot of experience with. So we learned a lot, I thought. I certainly did. And we came to understand better that our abilities are limited and that they take time, and that real coordination needs to be necessary. So I just want to note that that whole program is a difficult but very important one. And if we don't pay attention and dedicate resources, I really don't think that... I think it would be a shame to come as far as we've come and learn as much as we've learned, and then look at the difficulties as being not needing consistent effort. I think, I think when you're looking at that, you're talking about hoarders who fill their backyards and their property to the detriment of the neighbors. You're looking at people who squat in properties that they don't own, that lead to serious problems. You're talking about, on the positive side, you're talking about properties that get some attention and turn into, turn into private hands and are rehabilitated. But I really want to stress that I think we need to have a more robust program here, and we need to have a continuous reporting process. I hope that we can get to a better reporting process. And again, I go back to Pabriken. I think we need to coordinate when the street and alley, I mean, excuse me, when the Board of Public Utilities turns off the water and sewer, I mean, that's it. In my opinion, that makes that property uninhabitable right there. And particularly, when you're looking at three months, six months, nine months a year, that's, that's needs to be monitored so that we can get a red flag going, hey, there's a big problem here. And then, of course, that means that the sanitation isn't being taken care of either, which leads to that incredible trash mess in their front yard, which must have taken quite a bit of the $5,000. And so I just know how much work went into it, in all the departments. And everybody learned, and certainly I learned, and I'm not saying that this is all in Ward 1. Unfortunately, we're seeing these problems in neighborhoods I'd never imagined that we would have these kind of issues, but we do. But primarily Ward 1, and all the work we're doing to bring it up, I really believe that do you consider your department to be responsible for coordination, an explanation of that matter? Or do you think it's more of a, has more legal and other departments involved?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Labor. Ultimately, the buck stops at the Compliance Division. We have the building department, the nuisance department. We are the ones that ultimately out there every day taking care of it. We rely heavily on our partners in the Cheyenne Police Department, as well as the city attorney's office. And then, we wouldn't know if someone didn't pay their bill. We have to also rely heavily on the treasurer's department in order to find out where they're at with that particular property. And as you indicated before, the Board of Public Utilities is a pretty good indicator that when a property does not have water or sewer, after a three-month period, it becomes a dangerous building, and we can't allow folks to live there. So there's a lot of those different pieces that come together within the puzzle, but I think that the city's done a great job in pulling these together and creating the Compliance Division, and I think that we can set some of those perimeters and begin to put together an action plan that is very deliverable, along with the reporting process, so that the public is aware of all of the actions that are necessary and the steps that are necessary in order to create a safe and healthy community to be in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I've got a couple of other questions from other councilmen. Do you mind if I take those?
Excuse me?
I said I have a couple of questions for other, from other councilmen. Do you mind if I take those first?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Escobal, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question about the contractual services. And along the line of questioning that Councilman Labor had made, that obviously $5,000 is enough to go in and mitigate properties, such what you discussed. But we had discussed earlier about bringing some of those types of mitigation, mitigation issues in-house. And I don't see that in the budget, but what are we going to do with that? And go along with the mayor's comments about trying to get rid of bad neighbors in good neighborhoods? If the mayor wants to comment on that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not quite sure I understood exactly what the question was, Mr. Escobal.
Well, in your notes that you had sent to the council last week, that you realized there are some bad neighbors in good neighborhoods. And when I had talked to Mr. Fountain, over a month ago, we talked about bringing some of those jobs that we have to contract out to go in and mitigate some of the trash that's collecting in neighborhoods. And then, rather than paying, you know, to contract that out, that we were looking at bringing that service in-house. Are you familiar with that conversation, Mr. Fountain?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Escobal. I do recall that conversation, and I 100% still own that. We've done a lot of that ourselves. We've had three or four properties that we have abated. We are using our nuisance officer to go out to those locations, and with the support of Public Works and using a packer to go out and collect the garbage, we also are following back with some other support from Public Works and collecting that and making sure that we're following back with the areas that we're in. And then they've done an excellent job at sanitation. Mr. Polly has been very supportive. In terms of boarding things up, we've actually been using our inspectors, so if we have a little bit of downtime, or they've actually been willing to go above and beyond and do that on their own time, boarding up some of the necessary structures that need to be taken care of. And so I think, you know, yes, we are looking at that. There was some conversation about looking at our team and saying, do we have any wiggle room at all for some lawn maintenance? Or perhaps getting the weeds, weed whacked down? And really and truly, you know, we probably could, we could deliver that with a part-time person and deliver that with some tools and resources. But we did not ask for that in this budget, as we were a little bit concerned about where we were going within this fiscal year and looking at some of the potential cuts that we could be facing. Especially, these folks are very concerned about coming out of a RIF situation in the previous budget year. And so we wanted to make sure that we could deliver what we said we could deliver within our budget that we had in front of us, but we did not ask for additional dollars to do that, Mr. Escobal.
Okay, that's a, I guess that answers my, part of my first question. And then to go back to what the mayor had said in his notes to us last week. Do you have any more comments about how you plan to tackle that situation, Mr. Mayor?
You know, I think Eric answered it pretty well, but I do think that we have a good group of employees here in the city, and if, in fact, they have the bandwidth to add extra duties, using them to mitigate some of these, these problems makes a lot of sense to me. And as we go forward, if we need more money, you'll see me asking you for a reappropriation to add dollars as we go through that. And I'm pretty convinced that that'll probably end up having to happen, but this is, I think, a good place to start.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we've got about three more minutes left on these guys, so go ahead.
I am the council representative to the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities that I believe works closely with you, Mr. Fountain, on ADA issues. And I'm very concerned that there's no line item or support for that group here in our budget. It is a group that I've worked with for some time that has some really exceptional individuals that bring a lot of experience to their, that board, and then their recommendations and their communications to you, the mayor, the council. And I'm very concerned that they are in the position where they have to go to Super Day and have a dunk tank to raise money to maintain their operation and to spread their information. When, in my opinion, and I hope you'll agree with me, they are diligently working to keep us from having serious ADA rulings that could occur if we weren't working to take a look at it upfront, because those complaints are, anyone can make them. So I just wanted to note that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from committee? Any further questions or comments from committee? Questions or comments? Yes, Treasurer Lockman?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Aldridge on her question on the specialty pay.
You need to speak closer to the mic.
Sorry. That is John Palmer, who is the Safety Coordinator, and he receives a $50 stipend every month for having hazmat certification.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, Clerk Jones, you're on.
Hello, Chairman. To my page. We didn't have a, a lot of changes in the Clerk's office.
I'm sorry, could you give the page number?
I'm sorry, we're on page 93. I did, I did ask for one wage increase for the Deputy City Clerk and I would like to have the opportunity to explain why. Kylie has obtained her Certified Municipal Clerk certification. To earn this designation, she attended extensive education programs, which requires pertinent, pertinent experience in, in a municipality. The program prepares the applicants to meet the challenges of the complex role of a municipal clerk by providing them with quality education in partnership with institutions of higher learning. This process took her six years of dedication and sacrifice, which included time away from family for required travel to complete. During this timeframe, there were changes to the credit requirements, which made dedication to obtaining the certification that much more admirable. This position is currently $11,645 below mid-range. With this increase, she is still well below mid-range of, by $6,645 annually. Kylie has been a dedicated employee of the City of Cheyenne for 21 years. Thank you for allowing me to elaborate on that. The other changes in the Clerk's office include, previously due to the RIF, we were forced to let go of our part-time position. She was gratefully brought back in the HR Department when they had an opening for part-time. HR and I have agreed to compromise. We will, starting July 1, if this is approved in the budget, we'll, we'll start sharing Jeannie. She'll primarily be set in the HR Department, but she'll be doing scanning duties for us, which we are extremely behind on due to COVID and of course, losing that position. So $13,000 was moved from the HR budget into the Clerk's office in anticipation to cover our half of that cost. Just the other minor changes were just an increase in payroll due to our workman, workers' compensation issue of a reclassification of some of the Clerk's Office staff. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from committee for the Clerk's Office? Questions from committee?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Laborn.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm seeing a lot of cross-use of experienced city personnel that unfortunately, as was just proven, we can't pay what they're worth, but I think this is a compliment to your office, Madam Clerk, that you managed to do that and that I think as the many responsibilities of your office, I'm, I'm impressed that you've been able to keep that level of service and certainly, I know that's not easy, but I compliment you on your operation of your office.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Laborn, and I have to credit the HR Director for being willing to also share Ms. Jeannie with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the committee? Okay, hearing done. Treasurer Lockman, you're on deck.
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Robin Lockman and I'm the City Treasurer. The City Treasurer's Department has just one, but General Fund Division, which is Finance. As you will see on pages 148 to 149, my 2022 budget request is $792,000 and this is up $112,500 from the current fiscal year. We have eight employees in the Finance Division. This staffing number has stayed consistent over the past decade and a half, with the exception of moving the Grants Manager from, to the Mayor's Department in 2020 and then back to my department in the next year's budget. The only changes that I made in my budget request is to payroll accounts, including the following requests. First, the bulk of the $112,500 increase is due to the Grants Manager position that I just mentioned, that was moved from the Mayor's Division to my division, and that was $103,000 for her salary and benefits. As the mayor had stated in his report, the Grants Manager position replaced the Economic Development Officers at a lower salary, so this is actually a net savings to the city. My two other payroll requests are for salary increase for our Purchasing Manager and a promotion for our Accounts Payable Technician. I am asking for a $2,500 increase for our Purchasing Manager for a couple of reasons. First, he obtained his Certified Public Manager, or CPM designation, which is a nationally-accredited comprehensive management development program that requires 300 hours of study and prepares managers to work in local, state, and federal governments. Additionally, not only has he taken on more duties than his original job description, but I'm sure anyone at the city can attest to what a high-level performing employee this man is. Next, I am asking to promote our Accounts Payable Technician from a Technician 1 to a Technician 2 at a cost of 20, or $1,500. She not only does a fantastic job with the original duties in her job description, but she has taken on many accountant-level duties, such as general account lever, general ledger account reconciliations to relieve both myself and the Deputy Treasurer. Finally, these two employees started in the fall of 2018 and have not received a salary increase since they started at the city. My budget is still $37,000 less than what I, than what we spent in 2020, and I would like to stress that I did not ask for a budget increase back to 2020 levels for any of the non-payroll items. For example, our training budget was $12,000 in 2020 and was cut 92% to $1,000 last year. CPAs are required to take 40 hours of continuing professional education each year, which is really expensive, to maintain our licenses. Having a CPA license is a job requirement for both myself and my deputy, and the $1,000 doesn't cover this and leaves nothing for the rest of my staff for training. So in future budgets, I hope to be able to increase that up again. This covers the Finance Division and I'm available for questions and thank you for your consideration.
Questions for, excuse me, Treasurer Lockman from committee? Questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Laborn.
Well, I think the lack of questions speaks well for the office. We know what you do and we appreciate it and obviously it's wonderful to have those kind of people that you just noted are not having the kind of a salary that we'd like to give them and that they probably could get in, in the private sector. So your professionalism and that department's efforts over the past couple of years have been amazing to me, a non-number cruncher, but they always come out right in the end and I'm sure we all appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborn.
Dr. Aldridge, did you have a question or comment?
I just have a comment and this is a, a comment not just for Treasurer Lockman, but I just want to say, you know, in dealing with the mayor's office, the compliance office, the clerk's office, and the finance office, the treasurer's office, I just have to say that I have always found, gotten an excellent response and I feel badly that we aren't able to give sufficient financial rewards for these individuals that work so hard and their teams that work to support them and to really, really do the bulk of the work for, you know, a lot of the work that we do as a council. But I do want to acknowledge that they work extremely hard, they're diligent, they continue to seek professional development and continue in education even when we're not paying for it. And I'm really glad to see that the treasurer and the clerk have recognized that in their employees and would like to reward that. And I just think that these four departments have done an exceptional job in their presentations and in their preparation of their budgets and should have a shout-out and kudos to all of them for their hard work.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. Any further questions or comments from committee? Okay, hearing done. Tomorrow, May 7, at high noon here at the chambers, we're going to have the City Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that IT needs to do their presentation as well. They weren't on the agenda, but it was just missed because they were in the Clerk's office last year.
Well, come on down.
I, I believe Mr. Fountain is going to do that.
Oh. Is that why you were giving those looks and doing this?
I was like, just a little bit more.
Okay. What page is that on?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at page 85.
Okay.
This is a new department that has now joined the Compliance Division. It is not actually a new department, it was actually housed in the City Clerk's Office for many years, but has now been moved over to, to join our efforts in trying to find efficiencies throughout the city and delivery in terms of the software that we use, how we purchase technology products, and how we service what we currently have and grow in, in that efforts as well. The IT Department had a decrease of $436 in 2021 to 2022, but I think that when you talk about that number, the real, the real question is what services are we getting and how do we, how do we grow that? So there is a line item increase of $29,132 plus benefits to hire a Technician 1 for this division. What we actually did there was we had moved the mailroom from the, the IT Department, which really didn't belong there, and moved it to the Human Resources Department for confidentiality purposes, as well as to better service our city employees. And we realized at that point in time that we also needed additional IT help, not so much office support. Lynn's been great and a, and a very dedicated employee to us, but the services that she kind of provides were more administrative and so what we wanted to do was get that technology support. What we currently find is that our, our Director and our Deputy Director are doing a lot of that entry-level type of day-to-day operations, so setting up passwords and giving people cords and, and trying to get things done. But on the backside, there's some very big things that are very important to get done, to get done every single day. We look at the City of Casper, they operate with nine people in their Technology Division and we operate with five. And so we desperately are in need of help in this division. This is not an area that we can continue to ignore. It is something that is very important, not only on the public interface side, but on the backside of things, so that we can keep the operation going and, and have a seamless operation. There is no doubt that when you talk about IT, that it is, there's no ROI there and that it is a bottomless pit. Money goes into it, got to constantly replace things. You know, we have an age-out system, if you will, so we know we're constantly upgrading our, our equipment and our technology, but it comes at a cost. So we also have a little bit of an increase, we have $20 for our cell phone, but really there's not a lot of significant changes to this budget, other than the request for that individual. And we plan to kind of look forward as we begin to look at technology changing throughout the city and knowing that we're going to have probably a request for the next several years in terms of adding a full-time employee to this division in order to meet the, the changing opportunities within technology.
Okay. Any comments or questions on information technology?
This is Dr. Aldridge.
Dr. Aldridge?
I was just curious through you, Chairman Royal, to Mr. Fountain, if he can explain or give an example of the type of professional development he's planning or seeking for the $5,000 that is on page 85 for his IT staff.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Aldridge. So I met with our team a while back and we had conversations about what was going to be best for us. So they found an opportunity to get that online training, if you will, that will give them some certifications in this process versus sending our staff out because we are so limited in the number of employees we had. So they found an online resource that would be able to give them some additional training throughout the year and it would be something to where they could do it at their leisure and work around some of the scheduling conflicts that we have in the IT Department.
Okay. Dr. Aldridge, any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Councilman Cook, I understand you have a question, sir.
Do I?
Do you?
If I hit my button, I apologize. No, I do not have a question.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, unless, I mean, I, I apologize. No, I don't, sir.
Okay, thank you. I guess I have one question. Are we safe from ransomware?
I'm very confident, Mr. Chairman, to you, that our, our staff is very diligent in protecting our city every single day, but to be very honest with you, no one's ever 100% safe. We are as safe as we possibly could be and we're very confident that we do that diligently every day.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Laborn.
Well, I think that that last question really shows us the vast and mysterious nature of IT. And I, I know that, that those individuals have been working hard on that, but I think of all departments, and I hope no one else is thinking I'm not recognizing their efforts, but working from home and having all of that that we went through with, with this city being closed, I'm in awe of our ability to keep going and it was through the dedication of IT. And that was just, could have been disastrous. And I know that that meant eternal vigilance and some real working together and I certainly recognize that, that that department was really, really delivering above and beyond what anyone would have expected before the virus. So well done and well done to all departments here. I think that it's, when I look at what we've been through and how we've survived, I'm certainly proud to tell the citizens of Cheyenne that we've got good people that do exceptional work here and I'm certainly very proud of them. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any, any other ghost committees or anything you want to bring up?
Mr. Chairman, no, I think we're good today. Thank you, sir.
Okay, tomorrow at high noon, May 7, we'll have the City Attorney, Human Resources, Municipal Court, and Youth Alternative Budgets. Having no further work before us, this work session is adjourned.